Yeah, without wind, too.
Oh my God, well, we're going to the conference. I'm not leaving the hotel. We're going to the Bruins Blackhawks game tonight.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Um, voting year ago.
This is the December 3rd, uh, special meeting of the Stonington Planning and Zoning Commission. Before I call the meeting to order, I'd like to introduce our newest member, Dave Resendez, first meeting this evening. Dave, thank you so much for stepping forward for the community. We welcome you, and I'm sure you'll have a lot to say and make a lot of good contributions here. So, thank you for your service. Meeting is called to order at, uh, 7 o'clock. I'm Chuck Sheehan, I'm the chairman. Um, there'll be no, uh, alternates appointed this evening. We have all the regular members here. What's the commission's pleasure on item 3, minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes for meeting number 1774 from November 19, 2024, as written and submitted.
Motion by Ryan to approve minutes number 1774. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Gary, thank you, Gary. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously, chairman abstains. Item 4, public comment, this is an opportunity for anyone in the audience that wants to address the commission on any subject that's not on the agenda, not on the agenda. Anyone wish to address the commission? Hearing none, we'll move to item 5, correspondence, Clifton?
None.
And, uh, no correspondence, item 6, reports? Clifton?
Just general update on the plan of conservation and development. As I stated at the last meeting, we were in the process of finalizing the decision. We've made the decision, the selection committee has made a decision, and are recommending award of the P O C D to S L R International. They're one of the four firms that we...
Who's that?
S L R. Yep. Um, one of the four firms that interviewed, that we interviewed. That is going to be confirmed, hopefully, by the board of selectmen, who would make that decision at their meeting next Wednesday. And at that point, then we would go through the normal contracting process and moving forward. If anyone is interested in seeing the information that's been developed, including the questions that we asked the interview committees, their, um, proposals that were submitted, and all of the scores that were tabulated, I have those in hard copy at the town office, so happy to get those to you.
Can you scan them and email them or is it not good, other than coming in?
I can try, I do have digital copies of the proposals. I'd have to work to get everything else together.
Perfect, thank you.
Clifton, um, when are you thinking that, um, the commission would meet the representatives and the work would start?
So, depending on how long the contract process is, I would say sometime in the new year, uh, maybe January, February. Just because we're unfortunately running into the holiday period, so it's a little difficult to, um, get everyone together with people taking various holidays. So, I'd say, my expectation would be late January, early February for a meeting with the firm and the commission.
Okay, and will that take place in a regular meeting or will that be a separate meeting?
I'd have to look and see how to schedule it. We can do it during a regular meeting as, um, but traditionally, these kickoff meetings are the opportunity for, um, the firm to present basically what their hope and expectations are for the P O C D, and separately to, for the commission to share their hopes and expectations. So, I wouldn't necessarily want to bog down one of our regular meetings with that, and it might be best to do something separately.
Okay, and then just one last question. Can you remind me what the timeline is for completing any updates?
In the proposals, we saw, um, expectations ranging from 16 months to 24 months. S L R's proposal came in around 18 or 24 months.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Clifton, on item 6A1? Hearing none, uh, reports from the commission, Clifton, anything? Commission have anything for the good of the order? Hearing none, item C, zoning enforcement violations, I think there's just an attachment on the packet there. Nothing for administrative review, moves us to item 7A, whole business. And I understand we have an issue here, Clifton, on, uh, the first item A of Gary and, uh, Christie Caldwell, Ed Lally and Associates.
Correct, I received a, uh, message earlier today from Ed Lally requesting an extension on this application. That extension is to a date to be determined. I don't believe it's going to be the next meeting in December, it'll probably be the January meeting.
So, this has been on the agenda for, I feel, as if at least five meetings.
Yeah, it has.
Do you think we should just remove it and start over once they are, are ready to?
Maybe we should talk about the extenuating circumstances a little bit. Is it, is it not a place to say anything about what happened to Ed?
No, the applicant said that there's some health-related extenuating circumstances that have gotten in the way. I, I've been working with him in order to get all the items together to come before the commission. It's just not happening at this time, so we'll work to get that done as soon as possible.
Okay, I get, I do.
I had the same exact question, and there are extenuating circumstances that I think are being...
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
So, what's the time, what are the official time dates? So, it was received since September 17th?
Correct, it was supposed to be decided on by tonight. He's requesting an extension for that application, he has up to...
For another 65 days?
Up to 65 days, correct.
So, there, it's fine, they can keep going until then, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, the next two item, or the next item has been extended to December 17th, no action required, right, Clifton?
Correct.
And, uh, the next item is, uh, item 7B, uh, under whole business, site plan application of C Research Foundation Inc. I see, uh, Mr. Terenzia is here, uh, representing the applicant. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. For the record, Sergio Terenzia with Terenzia and Associates, offices at 99 Mechanic Street, Pawtucket, Connecticut. The, uh, application before you this evening, we were, um, working with Keith Sorenson, who is here this evening with me, who's representing the, um, the Mystic Aquarium, and, uh, my associate, uh, Rachel York, she's going to give a, just a brief presentation on the, the site plan. The, uh, application before you tonight is for a, uh, it's basically a canopy-type structure that is going over, um, one of the, uh, the pools that is used for, um, uh, the animals, some of the aquatic animals to, to stay in, and, uh, Keith can give you a little bit more description of what they're used for specifically. These pools are existing, they're, they're there, this is actually a project that we worked on years ago when they were installed, and including all the utilities, drainage, and everything else associated with it. So, Rachel will go into a little bit of what the conditions are there, the correspondence we've had with the town engineer as of late, and, um, give you just a brief presentation on what the, uh, what it entails.
Next, sir.
Just want to add real quick that the plans that we're presenting tonight were actually, um, modified, and Rachel will get into it, based on some commentary. Just one comment from the town engineer, and she'll go over those, the details of those changes.
So, as Sergio mentioned, um, I'm Rachel York. Our project is located at 55 Coogan Boulevard in Mystic, um, it's the existing Mystic Aquarium. Specifically, our site, um, area is the two existing pools located here. So, it's, uh, west of the existing parking lot and east of the, um, like, the main entrance there. A blown-up area is shown here. The pools are existing, as we stated, um, there's an existing canopy over this, uh, western pool, and the proposal is to add an additional canopy over the eastern pool. The canopy will have, um, the water will flow off the canopy into the existing drains, which then kind of goes into the existing drainage system. Everything that is existing is impervious, so the canopy will cover the impervious area. We're zoned tourist commercial, um, we don't anticipate any, um, zoning issues there. We did receive comment from the town engineer asking about the drainage, which we think that we addressed adequately, and it seems to feel like we addressed adequately. There will be downspouts, um, up here and down here on the proposed canopy, which will flow over land into the drains here, and ultimately into the catch basin here. Keith, if you want to go into, I mean, I'm not sure what the plan was really used on, but...
No problem. Good evening, everybody, I'm Keith Sorenson, Senior Vice President for Facilities and Capital Projects at Mystic Aquarium. Our, uh, project here is an important project. These circles obviously represent pools, as well as a small one here. They're 40-foot diameter pools, 10 feet deep, and they're about 6 feet in the ground. They, uh, have been in place for over 25 years. They've functioned very well for us for several purposes. They originally designed to support stranded animals for a temporary period while we nurse them back to health and then release them back into the wild and so forth. They were also designed for holding our collection for different reasons, whether it be a medical situation, or just the need to separate the animals, or if we're doing a renovation on a pool or something like that, we move the animals to these pools usually. And in fact, we just moved, uh, we just moved some sea lions back to a habitat we just renovated, so... They're constantly, and I wouldn't say constantly in use, but they're, they're used regularly. The need to cover the pools, now that's, um, two reasons there. Mainly, it's protection from the sun for the animals. A second reason would be just, it's important to have shelter when staff is working on the animals and to protect the animals somewhat from the elements, although they're, we're in the wild, obviously they're subject to the elements and so forth. But it is a, actually, it's, we're regulated by USDA to provide some amount of shade for the animals, whether it be the sea lions, the whales, or the penguins. And we've had all our animal, all our different animals in these pools at times. In the interim, we had to use, we call them, I think, there's, there's side pole shades or umbrellas that go over the pool. You know, incidentally, back when this was designed, it was designed for a canopy that covered all, both the pools, or all three of them as it, as it is here, kind of like where the ash line is represented here. But that went the way of value engineering, and so, the, we have a cover over what we call Pool 1, or a canopy, that's an observation deck, that's been in place since 2009, and here we are, seeking approval for a canopy for Pool Number 2. Questions?
How large an animal are the tanks, uh, I mean, can they put, can they put a whale in one of these tanks?
Yes, we've had, we've had our whales in there, our largest whale.
Okay, so from the largest to the smallest animals you have?
Yes, uh, yeah, we, right, Greg, we, we had a harbor corpus in, in one of these pools here. I'm looking at Mary Ellen because I haven't...
The size of one, Mary Ellen. Five feet.
The only other question I have is, um, on another application, earlier application, where we're dealing with the other end of the site, um, where the public enters the site in the ticketing area.
Yes.
We're concerned, uh, and this is more WPCF-type stuff than it is, is planning and zoning, but we're concerned there that, that some of the roof water might be getting into the sanitary sewer and being combined, and, and, you know, we, we want to treat all the wastewater that, that comes to the plant, we don't want to treat any clean water. So, if we can be sure that, that, uh, where the roof leaders are discharging tubes is not a sanitary sewer, uh, that would be most helpful. So, uh, if we could, if we could just, I, I don't think it'll hold up any approval. I'd be satisfied that, that, uh, we just make it a condition that the town engineer assure that, that the water is directed to a storm sewer, not a sanitary sewer.
I, I think we can do that as part of or before construction, yes.
Okay.
I don't think that would be unreasonable.
Do you have more information on the rest of the site, a site survey that shows all the infrastructure?
We've, um, my company was involved, um, years back, and, uh, we have a lot of records, and so does Keith, um, so we've been, with some of the projects that we've been working on, we've been doing kind of a deeper dive into the comprehensive utilities, drainage, and sewer, um, for the property. And actually, it's a good segue, we're going to be working on, hopefully, master plan and updating the survey for the entire property, and, um, we could take a look at that and...
That would be a good project for this, because we're almost certain that, that, uh, the, uh, the stormwater from the roofs is, is getting into the sanitary sewer.
We can evaluate.
It's a large problem, so we don't have to make it any worse, I guess. I don't think it's a big deal, Carolyn.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions for the, uh, sorry, are you concluded with your presentation?
I believe that concludes, Keith, did you have anything else? I just wanted to, um, add, uh, the, what we provided with you this evening were also some photos. We didn't, um, introduce those.
Yeah, they were very helpful, thank you.
One of them shows the canopy that is existing, and the, and the other photo, I just wanted to direct your attention, is the area that does not have the canopy. It's basically if you were looking right to left, um...
Yeah, I'm here, that's, this side, it's the one that doesn't have it.
That one doesn't have it, you can kind of see the other one. You can see just, there's the, and there'll be another if you can envision a canopy here. I'm not that great with rendering, so I didn't attempt to put one in and show what it would look like, but...
I just had one question out of curiosity now that you kind of pointed out. For the canopy that's going to be put, that you want over the, the other pools, are there going to be a lighting as part of that canopy?
Like wired lighting and all?
And is it going to match with...
Yes, there, we have a lighting built into the project, yeah.
Built into it, okay, and obviously, focus is lights down, not out, so, okay.
So, um, how, how tall is the canopy?
The ridge, I think it's 26 feet.
Do you have that dimension? Couldn't confirm it, I don't know off the top of my head. Um, it's pretty tall, because I'm assuming you have to get equipment in and out to get the animals in.
Yeah, there is a, there is a jib crane that's part of this complex, and needs to swing under the roof. I believe it's right around 26 feet, but, um, Rachel can check that.
And why the lights, if the purpose of the canopy is shade?
Primarily, yes.
So, why the lights?
She's asking why the lights.
Oh, I'm sorry, why the lights?
You're trying to block this one. I'm assuming at night.
Well, the, when we care for animals, that's sometimes around the clock. So, there's people out there working, you know, depending on what the condition of the animals might be. So, lighting is, uh, very important as far as getting in and out of the pools and being able to care properly for the animals.
Thank you.
How was the existing canopy worked, has it been good, what have you learned, changes for the new one?
Uh, it's worked great, it's a little bit bigger than the one we're proposing, because it also covers a part of an observation deck that I mentioned earlier. These pools are not open to the public, to, to our visitors, generally speaking, except maybe tours, if you want to consider that. But, um, the observation deck is opened when we have a, a situation where, you know, the animals are, can be presented, you know, from, from a distance. In other words, we, we don't always open them, sorry, it's a, depends on what, what situation is.
Thank you. Is the tank lit, the sub-aquatic levels, is there underwater lighting in the tank?
No, no, there's not.
There isn't, okay, okay, so I can understand the need for the, the lighting, but I, I think to complete the plans, there should be a lighting plan that's reviewed by the town engineer. So, it, uh, you know, it, there's a, a lighting level that, that is shaved, and it doesn't extend beyond the use of the building.
Right, so just to orientate me a little bit, this does not back up against 95, this extension, this backs up against, kind of like the wetlands between Valenti's latest parking lot?
No. No, it does, it does back up to 95, there's I-95 here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I...
Yep, so if you, if the photos...
Oh, it's right there on the, my little teeny print thing.
Yeah, it's in the small print, and it's even small, yeah, it's the inset, but, yes, the, I was going to bring up that the lighting should not have a tremendous impact on neighbors because it's 95, which we know is pretty well lit, I'm assuming, over here. I mean, you, as you drive 95 this way, I believe, old Mystic Village, which is very well lit now, and I, and I believe the aquarium is a place...
Well, yeah.
Yeah, so nice Christmas lighting up, or holiday lighting. But, yeah, when you, when you drive along here, I've done it many times, you can see, but there's, there's a lot of trees and things in between.
Yeah, in winter, you can...
Yeah, winter, you can see it, but...
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make, I, I thought it was 95, but then I, I honestly just didn't see it on the map, and I'm looking at the trapezoids coming down, and I'm thinking, hmm, is that the wetlands? But, okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Anyone else have any questions for the applicant? Hearing none, Clifton?
Uh, no questions or comments, I'll just note that the lighting plan is already included, it's still G E 101. It's not in the handout that they provided, it's in the packet.
Okay, thank you.
But it, it's, it says to replace or relocate existing flip lights to underneath the structure.
There are no other questions on the applicant, uh, what's the commission's pleasure on matter for C Research Foundation Inc.?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I make a motion to approve the application, the site plan application, as submitted with the following three stipulations. Number one, the applicant shall address outstanding comments from the town engineer with regard to the stormwater runoff going through the existing drainage system. I think you want, there's a notation in there that it go to a particular type of sewer, is that right?
A storm sewer, yes.
Storm sewer, okay, so make that stipulation, number one. Number two, final plan shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer, pardon me. And number three, prior to the issuance of a zoning permit, the final plan shall be signed by the commission and recorded in the town's lands' evidence records.
Motion to approve, uh, the application of C Research Foundation Inc. with several conditions. Thank you, Ryan, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Lynn, thank you, Lynn. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Any abstentions? Chair abstains, uh, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Terenzia.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item, item C, is, uh, deferred until December 17th, 2024. Brings us to the next item, which is item 8, under whole business, which is also deferred until December 17th. Same is true of the first two public hearing items, uh, no further action is required on those, correct, Clifton?
Correct.
They're deferred until December 17th, and it brings us to, uh, item 9C. So, for the public hearings, all members of the, all regular members of the commission will be seated. Uh, the way the public hearings are run here is the applicant makes a, a presentation, and, uh, the commission has an opportunity to question the applicant, staff makes comments, then the public is invited to speak either for or against, or just make a general statement on the application. So, um, item 9C, um, Lynn, could you just read the, uh, listing on the agenda?
Yes, we'd like to open up application P Z 2433 R A G Development, zoning text amendment application for an additional provision to the Z R 9.3 Port 10, to include additional design exceptions applicable to the flood hazard overlay district.
Thank you, Lynn. Is there a motion to open a public hearing?
Make a motion to open the public hearing, Mr. Chairman?
Motion made, is there a second?
Second. Second.
She's second.
Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Public hearing is in session. Counselor?
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners.
Evening, sir.
Mr. Eiler and Assistant. Can I approach you, Mr. Eiler, we have some photographs that we... Those photos were taken by Mr. Terenzia today, I believe. With the intent of just giving the commission some sense of... What we're all talking about. Now, this is a, an application to insert language into your zoning regulations, a text change application. It's, it's, it's not, however, totally disinterested, as, as you know, on the part of the applicant. The building that is shown in these photographs exceeds a couple of the dimensional limits in your current regulations. One of them, uh, the height limitation, uh, let me go back. As I understand it, the, uh, the issues arose while the town had a zoning regulation that provided flexibility for things like height on the top of a roof, um, in all zones, and with, with really no language guiding the application of that regulation. My understanding is that regulation was repealed in November 2023, I think. It appears it was repealed inadvertently. And your consultant, C H I?
F H I.
F H I. Among its many recommendations for continued amendments to the regulations, included, um, a regulation that would have replaced the repealed regulation, but only in the flood zone. We were here in October, October 1st, I believe, with an application to amend the regulation. That application, as I recall, um, was identical or nearly identical to the language of the C F H I proposal. The commission had some concerns, it seemed, uh, with that application. One was, uh, a concern that they didn't really, hadn't had really enough time to consider and digest, uh, what we were proposing, and, and the consequences it might have. Another was that certain of the dimensional flexibility that our original proposal would have provided was perhaps a little too much, a little more than the commission was, um, willing or thought would be prudent to allow. And the third, I, the third, I believe, was that there were no standards in that original draft, although, um, at, at least in our case, any, any application of it would have been by special permit, so the special permit, uh, criteria would have applied. In the proposal before you tonight, um, we have changed the, the dimensional relief, the amounts of the dimensional relief, I think in some cases, in substantial ways. I think one of the numbers went from 75% or something to 10%, or something like that. The, the height went from, I think we were asking for 6 last time, we were asking for 10, now it's down to 6. The repealed, uh, regulation would provide for 10 feet of relief on height. What we're talking about here is an elevator shaft that has extended beyond the roof line by 5.8 feet, or something like that, I think. So, the regulation, we think, obviously would be good for our client in the sense that it would give him an avenue, uh, to try to obtain relief by way of special modifications to the special permit that was issued for the property, for the project, I think, back in 2020. One of the items on your agenda tonight that was, uh, continued to December 17th has to do with those, those special permits, or, or some of them. Of course, the special permits can't be granted, or can only be conditionally granted, if this text change is approved. Ordinarily, on a text change, I don't think a representative of an applicant would be in here talking about the particular circumstances of the client. But in this case, uh, the client's situation, as I understand it, is quite dire. If unable to obtain approval for the... If unable to obtain approval for these changes, financing for the project will probably dry up. It's already been threatened for months. And I'm not here, I'm just standing a fact here when I say that this building appears to me to be about 90% finished. And if it, there's no way, as I understand it, that the excessive height of the elevator, for example, can be removed. But, except for perhaps taking out a third of the building and basically reconstructing it. So, it's practically and perhaps even literally impossible to fix this at this point. So, the, the fix would be to approve the text change as we've proposed it, and then our, our client will have to come in and try to convince you to grant the modifications. We did include, I hope I didn't say this already, but among the changes I made to the regulation we proposed the last time, was to include a statement that any application under this regulation will be subject to the special permit criteria, and I identified the ones that would apply. So, that, I think, should address the concern that was expressed the last time we were here about standardless regulations and, and no limitations on your discretion. So, there will be limitations. First of all, six feet is the, the maximum that we're proposing, and the application for special permits is gonna have to comply with the special permit criteria we identified. Now, last time we were here, your staff had, I don't think, recommended the approval of the regulation that we proposed, but had, seemed to be favorable to it. My rec, my reading of the staff report for this meeting is that staff remains, you know, in favor of, or at least certainly not against, the proposal we're making. I would suggest that what we're proposing is a common sense solution to problems that will not, will probably arise in other, with other projects. Certainly won't be limited to this one, I suspect. My understanding is that the regulation that was repealed in November 19, 2023, hadn't caused the town any adverse consequences, and it's not expected that this one will either, particularly given the discretion you'll have to apply it on a case-by-case basis. So, if, if you have questions about the photos, I think Mr. Trenzio would be in a better position than me to explain what you're looking at. But I, one, one reason we took the photos is to show that what we're asking for here is not extraordinary in terms of the relief. And in fact, probably, I suspect, fit in fairly well with the surrounding buildings and, and the neighborhood. I, I, I don't mean to stand here and threaten anyone, but if this regulation is not adopted, and eventually the special permits are not modified, you're gonna be looking at a building that will be in litigation for some period of time, I suspect. Won't be finished, and it'll certainly be in no one's interest to have that in this location. Oh, I meant to ask at the beginning whether we can take the record from the October 1, 2024 proceedings into, make it part of the record of this, this proceeding without actually having all the papers here.
Without objection. I, I have no objection. Anyone from the commission?
I don't.
Yeah, I mean, you'd like to have read them, but-
Well, the same paper, you read them in October, I believe, and-
They were in the minutes?
I don't think they were in the minutes. Some of them, some, some of the stuff was in the minutes, I suspect. They were certainly in the package that was given to you in October by, by staff.
I can include the minutes and the original application, PZ 2418 RA. That's what, that's what I think.
In fact, I- I think it's all part of the record anyway.
Well, I don't know if it's part of this record.
If you wanted to formally-
I didn't, I didn't make a-
I just, I have to say that this is a text amendment for the entire zone. This building is irrelevant.
Yeah, exactly.
We don't do spot zoning changes.
This isn't spot zoning. Spot, spot zoning is, is changing of zoning boundary.
Excuse me, I'm speaking.
Let, let the commissioner finish, please.
So, this is, this is, you know, I mean, that particular application and this particular building, I think, is just irrelevant to this discussion. So, I really don't see that there's any need to put that in the record when we're discussing this.
Just for posterity, the regulation amendment being referred to, it did come up in the public hearing that that was towards a specific end goal, but that project we did, I purposely kept separated from the other one for that exact reason. If the commission would like, I can put those minutes as part of the record for this project for that other regulation amendment that was denied. But this, that wouldn't include the special use permit application that is listed on the agenda, but technically separate.
But I understand what Lynn's saying, and I, I, I feel for you, and I'm not, we need to discuss this more, but these pictures, a text amendment is the entire zone. And I understand that you're concerned about this particular building, but I'm not concerned about that particular building. I'm concerned about how this affects everything that might come up in the future. So, when you're talking about text amendments, I think it's better to be, it doesn't affect, it's not, be more, be more general in terms of how this would affect all of the flood, the FHOD, not this buil-, don't talk about this building at all, because it affects the entire town, or it affects this, so this-
I can talk about whatever I want to.
Well, I, I'm, I'm just saying.
This, this building-
Please, please, let her finish.
Talking about this building-
Excuse me, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, you-
Please, the commissioner has the floor, and when she's completed, you can respond.
You can talk about this building, but in terms of how I'm going to weigh my decision on this, I'm not gonna look at that building at all. So, you, so, of course, you can talk about whatever you want, but in terms of the text amendment, it's a text amendment that affects the, like, like Commissioner Conway said, that affects this entire zone.
Absolutely.
And I do understand it affects this building, but it also affects every other building.
Absolutely, but I thought, I thought, in the interest of openness and transparency, it would be useful to put this in context for you all. And looking at this building and the relief that we'd be asking for from this building, I think also gives you a context as to how this regulation would apply to other buildings that might find themselves in the same circumstances. So, we're not, you know, I, I'm aware of, you know, what a zone, what a text change is, and that the key, key issues are how does it affect the entire zone. And with all respect, Miss Conway, this isn't spot zoning. Spot zoning is when you change the boundaries of a particular, of a zone in order to benefit one or two or three relatively small parcels. That's spot zoning. This is a text change that will apply to our property, our client's property, and others that find themselves in this situation in the future. Your consultant thinks that this is a good recommendation. In fact, the one that they proposed and endorsed grants greater relief than what we've asked for. And they, they proposed that, and my, I think it came out at the last, on October 1st, that you are in the process of revising your regulations again, or still, and that these, this proposal will be part of that, or would have been if it's not adopted now. So, it's a matter of now or later, and I don't know that there's any reason to wait till later, unless someone can give me one. And there's a lot of reason for, for adopting it now. I mean, if you adopt it, and, well, I won't go there, but for what it's worth, you know, a zone change is supposed to reflect or be consistent with the plan of conservation and development. I believe your P O C D is from 2015 at this point, so. And I found a few things in there that I think are relevant. On page 79, section 10, chapter 10, "Economic development is important to Stonington for several reasons: to provide for a healthy tax base, to attract new residents and businesses." Ten point one, "The grand list has slowed and has placed stress upon the local budget and resulted in challenging decisions about what can be funded. Growing and diversifying the tax base with more commercial property can help address this situation." So, diversity in the tax base to increase the commercial tax revenue was one of the goals. "To grow the grand list on an annual basis, Stonington must encourage and prioritize development." On that page is a picture of a underutilized commercial building. Actually, it looks like it's a couple of buildings combined, old, uh, commercial-type buildings that were underutilized. Now, the site that we're talking about, as I understand it, was the site of an oil, a gas station, a service station, that was in oper-, was, was out of operation for years, was an eyesore. And this, having this building and this use at this place is gonna be a tremendous benefit to the town. Section 10.2 of your P O C D, there's two references to flexibility, and there are other references throughout this document to flexibility. That's something that in, at least 2015, the town was looking to give this commission, I think, in order to address situations that might arise that would be somewhat unusual or different. Page 88, 10.4 of the P O C D, "Maintain and promote the town's economic drivers. The town should develop a comprehensive economic development plan that focuses on enhancing economic drivers, including but not limited to tourism. I suspect tourists will be staying in this building." And then there are, as you go on to the, the charts, and, and for section 10.2, there are more references to flexibility. "Encourage flexibility and creative adaptations regarding some flood hazard requirements in historic zones specifically for historic structures." I think that applies, though, not just to historic zones. "Conduct a comprehensive rewrite of zoning regs to revisit, update, and modernize commercial zoning and streamline the planning process." Then there's review text of LI 130, which I don't believe applies here, but at any rate, the, the idea there was to review bulk requirements and eliminate uses considered inappropriate. Again, in section 10.2.13, flexibility, increased flexibility. What this regulation will do is increase flexibility. And it may apply not just to situations where someone builds something in excess of the, of the, of the allowed limits, but, but could apply at the outset when someone comes in to apply to construct a building like this one, to give you the authority, the ability to grant some relief, and not have the potential developer have to go to the Z B A for variance. This will, so this commission will have the, the ability with its experience and wisdom with regard to applying the zoning regs. And I don't know your Z B A, I'm not, I'm not saying anything to worry about your Z B A, but I think you'd prefer to have this commission making decisions like this than the Z B A on a claim of hardship. Oh, if, if you do grant this, basically for the reasons I've already talked about at some length, I would ask that you put the earliest possible effective date on it, because, well, for the reasons I've stated. I should have pointed out, Mr. Trenzio is here to help me when I stumble, and Mrs. Giannopoulos?
Georgia.
Is here as well. She's actually, she's actually the principal in the applicant corporation. I don't know that I have anything else to add that would be helpful. I apologize if I ruffled any feathers, I certainly didn't mean to. I'll blame it on the cold I have. People in high political office are-
Thank you, no harm done.
Blaming people, blaming me is things on cold. So, with that, if there are any questions or concerns, I, I welcome-
I just wanna say, you said something that, that hotel there was better than the, the gas station that was there, the service. I, I could tell you right now, a lot of people, residents in this town, probably view that service station having a place to fix their cars more important than that hotel. Just telling you, it's a slippery slope. When you say-
Yeah, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to derogate or whatever. My understanding was it was basically abandoned and, and had been-
They moved one place to another, and honestly, the town could have used two service stations, so it, 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 I'm a resident, it, it can. So, it's a slippery slope, a hotel versus a place for residents to fix their cars.
I don't know your regs, could, could, could a service station, would a service station be a permitted use in this zone now?
Pre-existing non-conforming.
No, no, just, you got a virgin lot, you got a vacant lot, no use on it, no, no non-conforming. It's not among the permitted uses, I would think, in this zone, particularly not in the flood zones. But I understand what you're saying, sir. I mean, we all, we all have attachments to things that we don't.
It wasn't attachment, it was, nice place to have a car fixed versus a hotel.
If the owner was here, I'm, I'm certainly not disparaging. I'm just saying, my understanding was that it had become somewhat unsightly, and it's been replaced with a brand-new building. That's all. Okay.
Any further questions?
I would ask, if you could, if there are questions that they be asked now, if, if they're the kind of questions that, that I or Mr. Trenzio can answer, rather than waiting for deliberations to bring them up.
We're, we're gonna, this is the public hearing. This is when questions are asked.
I understand.
And we're running the meeting, sir.
I know, I'm just, I'm just asking.
We, we understand the order and will control the meeting, and when the questions are asked.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, and I think I'm gonna direct it to Clifton, because you brought something up, and I wanna make sure I understand the chain of events here, because I think it's rather important to what is being asked. So, if I'm understanding correctly, that apparently you're claiming that is the, the original text of this was inadvertently repealed?
That's my understanding. I don't know-
Well, that's what I, got your understanding, that's why I wanna understand from Clifton.
I think that was in Mr. Eiler's report.
Can I, can I ask him?
Yeah, we, we ran through this with the last application, and I did a review of the minutes of the phase one, where we started talking about some of these textual changes. I couldn't pinpoint the exact moment that this regu-, original regulation, 6620, was brought up and said to be removed. So, I said at that meeting that I believed it was done inadvertently. I couldn't find anything relevant in the minutes to the commission making a decision to remove this. Doesn't mean that there wasn't a separate discussion that did require that to be removed, it's just not in the minutes.
That's what, and I guess from my perspective, that's what concerns me. If we don't have a record that we actually did, in fact, choose to remove this language, then, then either it was mistakenly removed, we don't have a record of that.
Part of, and part of the discussion as we started the phase two, when we did the environmental subsection in the beginning, when recommendation number four came up, the comments from FHI were that they believed that it shouldn't have been removed in phase one and should be reinstated. There was some concern from the commission at that time because the original language was across every zone in town, and as we were talking about some of the environmental elements, it was reduced to the flood hazard overlay district. So, I believe that's why recommendation four is phrased the way it is. It's the original language or the original bulk limits, but reduced to only the flood areas as opposed to across all of town.
He's really confused me. So, I thought I understood. So, this language was in the regulations for every single zone, and then it was-
By special use permit.
By special use permit. What, what did the original language actually say?
The original language is in the report. So, it's under the comments, town plan comments.
Oh, thanks.
So, it's all that italicized text, which is CR 6620. And so, it said, "By special use permit," and this would have applied to any structure in town, or new structure in town, they could apply for this exception to increase the height of the building just to accommodate architectural features, and it listed a few of them. And it said, and it said, "Shall not exceed 75% of the total roof area and be no more than 10 feet in height." When we did the last application that was denied by the commission, the 75% number and the 10-foot were the biggest concerns that were raised during the public hearing and in the deliberation afterwards. And so, in talking with the applicant on applying for a new reg amendment, the, we took that information, and my suggestion to the applicant was, okay, what is the bare minimum that you would need for your specific project? Maybe come back with that. And so, that's why that number reduced from 75% to 15%, and from 10 feet to- And so that's why that number reduced from 75% to 15% and from 10 feet to 6 feet. So although the commission does not have to take into consideration whatsoever the buildings that were, the images or the other application, that is where the number came from.
And on the original application for this building, since we continually talk about this building, and it has been the only example given in the discussion, was part of the special use application for the additional height requirement that, no?
No, because it was approved with a different elevator shaft proposed, and that had to be changed in order to accommodate, I believe, I'm looking at Sergio, but I believe that was in order to accommodate female requirements.
And nobody came back and asked?
And so, well, they, it, it was constructed, and then when it came back for the special use permit, the regulations had already changed. And so then, therefore, it wasn't allowed, you couldn't apply for that special use permit.
But it was constructed?
Correct.
Well, when it was constructed, as I understand it, I could be wrong again, because I wasn't there. But my understanding is, when it was constructed, it would have been in compliance, it would have met the limits in this, in the repealed regulation.
It would have then, but it wasn't approved.
Exactly. Thank you.
And we, we talked about this with the zoning enforcement officer, because there was a delicate balance of, honestly, a month or two in which this construction happened, and the application wasn't applied for, and the regulations changed. So, but yes, it was constructed. It wasn't approved at the time it was constructed. And the application basically went through, that application went through an after procedure, where they did apply for a variance, they did try to apply for the special use permit. And the reg amendment seemed to be the best course of action going forward. Again, that's talking about a project that's completely separate from this application, but it is worth mentioning that that's the chain of events that kind of led us to this point.
Your town attorney suggested that a tax change be applied for, because there's no other ways. You know, we looked and looked to see whether the original special permit would be subject to, would continue to be subject to the regs that were in force at the time it was approved. Because, you know, permits, especially since COVID now, statutes have been changed, so these spite plans last for until 2033 or something, some of them. But no, you know, we tried. We scoured the case law to see whether a reasonable argument could be made that this, this anomaly should be covered, should be governed by the regs in force and when the, when those permits were approved in 2018, I think. And that's not the law. So they applied for a variance, and it was denied. And so here they are. This is really, I think, the last opportunity for any relief that they can have that would be reasonable.
And I just have one more question.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Because this is a tax change for an entire district, not just this building. But what you said was that you wrote the text, you've written the proposed text change so that it's this building. Did you do any other research? Is there any other justification as to the parameters of the text change, 10%, 6 feet, et cetera, et cetera, that would apply to other types of buildings, et cetera? What is your research? What is your, what is your?
Well, no, I, I, I don't think I'm capable of, maybe Mr. Trenzio is, of looking at other buildings to which this might apply in the district. It's more likely it will apply to new construction as it comes along. But I, I do think that the reductions that we, we put in the reg, one went from 75% to 15 or something like that. The height limit went from 10 to 6. And as Mr. Iler, I think, said tonight, he, he recommended that we amend what we proposed before to do the very bare minimum that would be necessary for this building to be able, to be able to be completed. And so that's what we did.
Okay, thank you.
But I do think, you know, it's just as a common sense general matter, having limited, having reduced the, the flexibility, the degree of flexibility as substantially as we did, I think that should give comfort to the commission, that this is, you know, you're not going to end up with 30-foot elevator shafts at the top of buildings or anything like that. The most, you're going to be able to have a elevator shaft extend beyond the roof line will be 6 feet. And one reason I think we gave you the pictures tonight is to show in perspective what that means. And what it means is that it's not going to, it's not going to be intrusive. Several shots that Mr. Trenzio took today, you can't even see the roof from certain angles of the building. So I don't know what else I can say. I think in terms of, if this were just a virgin text change application with no context to it, I think we've still made out a reasonable argument for it based on your plan of conservation and development and your consultant's recommendations. Your consultants obviously feel the need to have some flexibility, especially in the flood hazard zone, where I think site conditions are more prone to pop up after approvals than they would be in other places in town. So, I mean, I think this is a good reg for the town. I think it's one that the town's consultant and, I believe, planner would recommend. And my sense is it's going to be adopted now or in months from now, whenever the overhaul is back.
That would be very optimistic, a month.
I didn't say a month, did I? I think it's whenever. But yeah, I'm sure it won't be a month. I mean, I see what you've got on your next agenda, for one thing, so.
Thank you, sir. Does that conclude your presentation?
Unless there's any other questions or comments.
Any other questions for the applicant, engineer, or his attorney?
Questions, I have things under discussion.
Well, again, with all due respect, Mr. Chairman, I'm not trying to run the meeting, but the last time we were here, the hearing was closed, issues were raised that hadn't been raised during the hearing, and I couldn't get up to say anything. And that's, I'm trying to protect myself against that.
Excuse me one second. If the commission makes a motion and it's seconded, and there's discussion on the motion, that isn't necessarily a question. That's discussion i- is part of the deliberations of the body under Robert Schule's order. That's not out of order.
No, I didn't say it was. What I'm saying.
Nor is it anything that you have an opportunity to rebut.
What I'm saying is that we have a public hearing, it's open, it hasn't been closed yet. Certain of the concerns that were raised the last time had to do with things like the numbers. And we could have addressed the numbers the last time if the hearing hadn't been closed. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I was going to, I was going to defer to Clifton if all the questions.
Well, I was, I was just going to add on that point alone, when I distributed that note on procedural items. This kind of came up in that, is that no new information that the applicant can rebut, rebut to can be presented after the public hearing.
After the close, correct.
So it's just new information.
No information.
But if it's stuff that we've already discussed, then yes.
Well, there's really, it's a text amendment, so it's not new information, because it's all here, right? I mean, I have some just comments about some of the language.
Correct.
And that would be under the, under the motion to approve. No, it's not a question to you, I have some, some comments about the language.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Whoever you want me to.
So are there any further questions?
No, I don't have any questions. I have some comments.
Okay. If you have comments, and it's, it's part of the discussion on a motion.
Yes.
Then I think you're in order and would support deferring it until that time. Any, no further questions on part of the commission? Okay. Clifton, you've given your comments. Okay. Anyone from the audience? Do we have any sign-up sheet there?
Nobody signed up.
No one has signed up? We still want to offer anyone who's in the audience an opportunity to speak for or against or just make a general comment on this application? Does anyone wish to do any of those? Hearing none, I don't imagine you require any rebuttal.
No, not silent, no.
Since there was no comments.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Then what's the commission's pleasure on closing the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close this public hearing.
Motion to close, seconded by Lynn, thank you both. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Public hearing is closed. What's the commission's pleasure on this application?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the zoning regulation text amendment as submitted by the applicant. I do not see any recommended stipulations confirming that with Clifton.
Motion, motion to approve by Ryan. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you very much, seconded by Gary. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Did you want to go first?
I'm going to go, Lynn can go first.
Yeah, I, first off, I think that although the plan of conservation and development was cited a number of times about new businesses, you know, diversifying commercial property, nothing in that said anything about height restrictions, design, et cetera. So I don't think there's any justification for this text amendment based on the plan of conservation and development at all. I also think that the justification that was presented by the applicant was solely for one particular building that was built without a special use permit. So, and I personally don't think that we should allow for these kind of exceptions to the rules in the, you know, the flood overlay district. And I think we're going to have a lot of discussion on that going forward when we talk about amendments to, to the regs for the next vote. So, no, I, I would deny this based on those.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman?
I mean, I have some just really nitpicky things just about the text before I get into my other things. So I'm comparing what was in there before and what we have in front of us. And the first line says, "The commission or in the cases in which they have authority to act, the planner or the Z E O, in their discretion." And the old one says, "The commission may, by special use, authorize certain roof structures." I like this much better. I, there were things like "at their discretion," in cases like giving authority to the planner or the Z E O. I think it should just be us. So that first line I'd like to see switched before I get into it. So there's that one. In the old one, it says, "Structurally altered to a reasonable or, and necessary height." And I think necessary is important, because reasonable is something, but necessary is we have to do it for, for whatever. In B, this is just a weird thing, and I think it's, because it's this project, and I think it shows that it's just this project, it says, "For any commercial structure such as a hotel." Like, it could be any commercial structure, you don't need an example in there. And those are my specifics of.
Good points.
And I would just like to, and I was, thank you, but the word necessary.
Could she finish, please?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
But, and then to go back to what, to what Lynn was saying, I think we are in the middle of a big zoning rewrite. And one of the things I, I think that we're talking about, and I hope we're going to be talking about, is the whole concept of overlay zones. And I know that was something that F H I brought up a couple of times, and we said we'll talk about whether overlay zones are appropriate and whether we like them in. And to, to do a text amendment at this point, when we are in the middle of doing the commercial industrial overlay zone stuff, I'd like to see it all done, done together, because this is, again, a specific thing, and I don't think we're there yet. We have a lot of discussion, and doing this right in the middle of the whole zoning rewrite, I think it needs to be taken into account with the entire zoning rewrite, not doing it now and then, was, and then in a month, when we all look at all the, all the zones, we say, oh, yeah, we shouldn't have put that back in. You know, it sort of ties our hands a little bit. And agree with the same thing with the P O C D, I didn't find any of that compelling, his arguments about that this was in the P O C D. And I think that might be it for now.
Any further comments, Lynn? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'd just like to, I totally agree with you, and I also think the word necessary, necessary for what?
Well, just because it's in here and it does.
You know, what does that mean? It means nothing, actually. It's necessary so it's designed, so it's aesthetically appealing, you know, like a cupola. You know, it's not like somebody's going up top to look for the ships coming in. You know, I, I just, really, what does necessary mean?
It was just in the original one, and I thought it was a little bit more clarifying than just, we're just going to do this to a reasonable height.
To re, and then, right, and then.
So this is a reasonable and necessary.
Just please, why don't you have the floor? It's not a conversation between the two of you. Are you concluded? Do you have additional points?
Well, my additional point was, this is so specific to the hotel, they clearly need 6 feet to make it. And maybe we should look at, would, not that I want to go back to the 10 feet, because when we had that design meeting, on that workshop, everyone didn't like the taller buildings. That was across the board, everyone said, no, the taller buildings, everyone in that room. And to say, you know, 6 feet, 10 feet, whatever, I think that this is clearly just fixing a situation that was a mess from the, from day one, or not a mess, but I wasn't here for any of that. But it's fixing a specific situation, and it seems like there should be, there could be another remedy, Z B A. Did they go to Z B A?
They did.
They didn't, they got denied.
Correct.
They got denied Z B A. They got denied Z B A.
Any other comments on the motion?
I have some comments, Mr. Chairman, if I may. I think, I understand the concerns we have with having, you know, approving something that was crafted, obviously with a particular outcome in mind for a particular building. But I think we are missing a larger point. And the point here is that this language, the original language, as I understand it, was somehow inadvertently removed from our regulations. Okay? So we, we can't prove that it was either voted upon or, you know, anybody gave approval to remove that language in the rewrite process. Am I correct in that assumption? I know you couldn't prove it one way or another.
I could not find any.
Okay. So my concern with that is, if we somehow inadvertently remove language, and then in the course of, you know, this project or whatever, that because that language was removed, they run up against it, and they're not able to proceed, my initial thought would be, we put the original language back, right? And then we can proceed with the regular zoning rewrite process in order to not penalize somebody for a mistake or, you know, somehow that occurred.
Inadvertent action.
Inadvertent action, that we can't document, this was done because we chose it and made a vote to do it. So that would be how I would approach this. Now, whether that means we approve their amendment as written or discuss the possibility of re, you know, and what I think is probably the smarter way to go, because then it takes their personal planned considerations out of the discussion altogether. We put the original language back in, and then we take it through the normal process of a rewrite. That would be how I would perceive it to work.
So, I understand what you're saying. So let me just clarify again, because I was not here for this whole process with, with the hotel and everything. So the original language is across the board in town. And it says, "The commission may buy special use permit." So they would need to come back and get a special use permit.
They would need to amend their existing one that was approved.
Right. So we could say, put this back in, because this was there, and they would have to come back and amend their special use permit. And we could deny that.
We could consider it.
We could consider, but they would have to come back with another application.
Correct.
To amend that. And then, and then this goes back in, and it goes across the board to everything. I mean, I would be.
That deals with your issue, that it's not, it's not dealing with a specific lot, it's dealing with an entire zone.
Well, no, it's, it's the entire town.
Right, also, yes.
It's every.
It applies across, and it's the original language, again. That's kind of why it takes that, the specificity that is in the current proposed here, and takes that and puts it back to what it was.
Is that what F H I is recommending in, in their language? That is what they're recommending.
I don't like putting it back in this, in just one zone.
I just want to, is that what F H I is recommending? That the language go back in, correct?
Correct.
That's what I thought.
With some exceptions. I, I did have a couple, not rebuttals, but just clarifications to Commissioner Morrison's original suggestions on edits. This is, it would now be.
Please.
So the first comment, and I can explain why the language for the authority, for the planner or the Z E O is to act in that fashion, would be, this would be the case in, when a existing structure, say a single-family home, has a chimney struc- chimney or similar structure that exceeds that height, the language without having the Z E O being able to sign off on it would require that individual property owner just to replace or even alter the chimney slightly to come back for a special use permit for something like a single-family home. So that's where they would have to. So that's where they would have the discretion, as it already is given to the CEO, to do that review for something like a single-family home. This wouldn't add any powers, it would just be considered similar to the existing set of powers that the CEO already has. So that's why that was phrased the way it is. It also would apply to ADA components as well, that could potentially alter the height of a structure, which I can't think of off the top of my head, but ADA is given strictly to the CEO to manage, not the commission. So those would be two examples that I would think off the top of my head of why the CEO needs the discretion to be able to apply these for items already-
But they already have that discretion.
They do not.
They do not.
Because if you take out, if you take out that language, that allows them to review the, to review the height exceptions for some structures, this would mean, in the case that I provided, a single-family home would have to require a special use permit from the commission to basically update their chimney.
They're not, that's, that's a little family homes for example.
It wouldn't be.
And they're not now.
Not if, not if the language, correct, not if the language went in.
Do you have other comments on that?
The only other comment that I had was regarding, sorry, the flood hazard overlay district. The flood hazard overlay district is an overlay district identified by the town, but it is set solely by FEMA. So we can't change that. So basically, if FEMA updates their maps, the flood hazard overlay district changes.
So it's not a zone.
It's not a specific zone. It's only the flood, the FEMA's flood zones in town that are in the FHOD, nothing else would apply. So if a property has a height requirement for FEMA, this is when that would apply. But still, language as proposed would be a special use permit.
Commissioner Morrison, did you have any other points you wanted to make?
Well, then I just go back to, we're doing it then for this totally one little tiny zone. I would be more comfortable going back to the original. I'm not comfortable with it in either way, but I would be more comfortable going back to the original than doing this. But I don't like, I mean, I'd say I don't like it, but.
Okay, thank you. Understood.
If I had a choice, I would go back to the original, to do it across town, to not make it for this one.
What's the commission's general feeling? I mean, we're discussing the motion, so what's the commission's general feeling on, on that option? Ryan identified really another option where we could entertain, I guess, a motion that we would bring to ourselves to put the language back in, correct? We would initiate that on our own?
The motion as it stands is to approve the application as-
The specific language, right.
Correct. So the procedure would be for the commission to either amend that motion to include some of the alterations to language Commissioner Morrison suggested, or it'd be to deny that motion, and then you'd do a note motion to put in the original language or recommendation number four from FHI, which you could, which you could do as part of this as well.
Okay, so we could conceivably, so I understand.
Conceivably, or-
Oh, you've got a motion on the table.
Oh, no, we didn't, we're just talking about before we vote on it, if there are other odds seats that, that are more acceptable, that are more acceptable.
You'd have to deny the existing motion, and then come back with a new motion to put in the old language.
Oh.
And then you would go back.
That would have to be a-
Try to deal with some of the objections, right.
I, I'm not a planner, and I'm not a lawyer, but I'm going to disagree. I would think that we would have to do a text amendment application to put in, to put in, this is-
It's a good point.
I agree.
Technically, you don't have to, you could amend it as you want to, but since it is such a significant change.
Yeah.
You basically, you would instruct me to put in an application, to put in the original language again.
It's too big a change.
And then we would hear it in a public hearing, but procedurally, you don't have to do that.
I would feel incredibly uncomfortable changing it.
So this is a text amendment application? That, that is what's been applied for?
This is a text amendment application. You could, you could say, "I make a motion to amend the text as proposed to X."
Yeah, this, this was advertised as a text amendment, advertisement.
So in other words, just so I understand, we would basically be saying, we're making an amended motion to take this, what they've originally proposed out, and replace it with what had originally been in.
Correct. But I do agree with Commissioner Morrison's point that that is a significant change.
Yeah, and I think we should have a separate motion on that.
Probably would have recommended, but it could be-
And we could make a text amendment motion to make, have this totally, our amendment is to take it totally out. It's already out.
Well, it's not in there, so you're just denying it.
Right, but see what I'm saying.
That is a good point, because it's gray as to whether it was inadvertently pulled out or-
I'm not sure it was inadvertently pulled, pulled out.
Well, I'm not either.
I have a question about heights.
We can't explain.
I have, I have a problem with the fact that we can't prove that it wasn't inadvertently pulled out.
That doesn't, just for, again, for austerity's sake and legally speaking, just because it might have been inadvertently removed, doesn't, it's removed. Because there's no gray area in that.
We have a motion on the table, it's been seconded. Does the, if there's no further discussion, do we want to vote on the motion? Okay. We probably ought to do this by roll call.
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner Morrison?
No, deny.
I'll deny.
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 The motion is denied. Chair of states.
Now, at this point, since we've denied it, is this where we would direct you to then draft, is it a zoning amendment, or, you know, an emotion to bring this original language back? How do we proceed there?
If, if you wanted to go the route Commissioner Morrison brought up, and I would tend to agree with her on this, the motion would be to again deny this application, and then you would instruct staff to do their own application to bring before the commission as a town application to put in the original language and set up a different public hearing. So if you wanted to take that route, that would be the process.
Why wouldn't it be another public hearing?
It would be.
Yeah, oh, I think you said it wouldn't be, I think you said no.
No, it would be.
Okay, yes, it is.
So we need a motion to deny, and there has to be a reason to deny.
We just did, didn't we?
We just did.
Well, we, no, the motion to approve failed.
Oh.
Motion to approve failed.
Because now we need a motion to deny.
It's not a denial.
It's not a denial. So we need a motion to deny, and, and there has to be a reason stated on the record for the denial.
Not for a text amendment. Didn't you read what he prepared last time?
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman-
I read it.
Then I stand corrected.
I make a motion to deny the text amendment, zoning text amendment as submitted, is that what you need from us? And in that same motion, do I also then request, I request that the town planner and town staff prepare a motion to, a zoning, a text amendment motion to reinsert the original language prior to 20, November 2023, back into the regulations. Does that cover what we did?
Just for the record, this application would be denied.
Correct.
And I would set up a separate application to reinstate the existing language.
Correct.
Now, the existing language for the entire town?
Correct.
Or as FHI proposed, which is that flood hazard overlay district. I'd like that on the record.
I, honestly, I think we should do it for the entire town.
Yeah, because that's what was at the start.
That's what was, yeah, I think we should start with that.
But I'm not understanding this, yeah.
Well, we could discuss it then, like, would we then take it down?
Right, yeah, correct. I think that deals with everybody's objection at this point.
No, it doesn't.
Well.
Because we have, it, it is gone. It is gone. We have, we're in the middle of a major regulation changes, and I don't understand why, it's gone. There is no issue. Legally, it is gone. So I'm not sure why we're bending over backwards at this point to say, well, we're taking this one thing, and we're going to change it back to what it was before, when in reality, we're, we've moved on, we've moved on, and we've, we've talked about height, and this is legally done.
Lynn, I think everybody agrees there's ambiguity about how it got taken out.
It doesn't matter. It's, it's done.
There's ambiguity, there is ambiguity.
Let me just-
And for, for that reason, for that reason, it can be brought back and denied, okay? It can be brought back. You have an opinion? Everybody here has an opinion. It can be brought back, and you can vote against it.
Okay, but you said that's all to everybody's-
No, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is bringing back the regulation deals with some of the objections that have been raised here, that, that this doesn't apply to the whole town, it applies to just one piece of property. Those are, it deals with some of those objections, so. So we have a motion on the table, I didn't hear a second.
Did I hear a motion? To deny?
Yes.
Oh, I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion on the motion?
Again, for clarity and for the record, the part of the motion that Ryan made was to deny the application as presented.
Correct.
And as part of that is to instruct town staff to prepare a separate text amendment application by the town to reestablish the original language from the 27th edition for public review. That's what I've heard.
And that is correct.
Apart, apart from Commissioner Conway, but that's what I heard from three of you.
So we have a motion, we second it.
Can I, I would make an amendment to the motion, is that how it works? I would just make it a clean motion to deny, and then we can talk about where-
No, he said it has to be tied to this, correct?
No, it doesn't.
It, it, it doesn't have to, but for the record's sake, I would like to have a direction, because if it's just-
Correct, and I think that makes-
We can do that after the hearing, I, I'd like to not tie it to the design.
I, I think we need to, well, we have the motion, so.
You have the motion, and you withdraw your second.
Oh, so I'm withdrawing my second, and I'm amending the motion. I hate this stuff. I'm amending the motion to be just a motion to deny. And now we have to vote on the amendment, right?
There's already a standing.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I already made the statement.
The motion, the motion was made. Is there a second to the motion that's made?
I second the motion.
Motion made and seconded.
And then would I make an amendment to the motion?
Only Ryan can, because it's his.
Oh, you only can, okay.
You would have to deny his, and then you would make one.
Correct.
Robert's rules is funky like that.
I know, I know, it's, I know.
Okay, so, so let's have a roll call vote on this, Commissioner Morrison?
So do I vote to-
This is to deny?
Yes, I vote to deny the application.
No, you, you would vote no if you don't want to instruct town staff. So you would vote no.
No, I'll be, I'm okay with the motion, because I think we can, we can work that out later.
Okay, I'm in favor of the motion.
Yes?
Yes.
No.
Yeah, the motion passes. So it's denied, and you, you are instructed to bring back a motion for the original text to be reinstated.